Representative Dan Campbell, Councilwoman Lewis, Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon and happy new year to all. This is the year 2012 organizational meeting of the City Council of Elizabeth. Notice that the committee filed on the city clerk's office and posted on bulletin board on December 27, 2011, and a copy of this notice has entered Swiret Home News Tribune in Cape Division, Elizabeth, in compliance with the provisions of the Overcover Meeting Law of New Jersey. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand at the opening prayer to be delivered by Joseph Alaguerre Lee of the Second Mass of Women Baptist Church in Elizabeth.
Good afternoon, good sir. Dear God, Elohim God of glory is our God. We come in the name of your only God and Son, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, and we ask God's sake that you bless this reorganization meeting. God bless our neighbor, our City Council members, our directors and everyone being appointed today. Bless our residents and our citizens in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Come remain standing and join me in the silent worship of the ladies and gentlemen.
I am President of the United States of America and the Republican Party for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The 2012 Council of Elizabeth, Councilman Kirkland DeGussen.
Here.
Councilman Question.
Here.
Councilman Jackis.
Here.
Councilman Broden.
Here.
Councilman McCall.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Stenning.
Here.
Councilman Goldman.
Here.
Councilman Mann.
Here.
The first order of business will be the election of a temporary president of the City Council. Are there any nominations?
My pleasure.
Yes.
If my pleasure is nominated, Councilman Dan Broden will be the current president.
Are there any other nominations?
Except that.
Councilman Broden has been nominated and there are no other nominations. I would ask the necessary ballot, electing Councilman Broden as temporary president of the City Council.
As we close out 2011, the best year of this world, we have a lot of hope, a lot of prayer for 2012, we're much better. And with that, hopefully, this council and the city can move forward as it has in the past in a positive direction. I will now conduct the election for the president of the City Council for the year 2012. Are there any nominations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Question.
President, I would like to nominate Councilman Nelson Gonzalez, President of the House of Commons.
Are there any other nominations?
Councilman Gonzalez, nominations are closed. Councilman Gonzalez has been nominated and there are no other nominations.
I will now conduct the necessary ballot, electing Councilman Gonzalez from the second ward as president of the City Council for the year 2010. I want to thank you for joining us today and wish you a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year. Before saying any words, I want to thank my colleagues, first of all, for their bold confidence. I want to thank Councilman Phil Keating for his service this past year, thanking Councilmen. I also like to thank my wife, Melissa, and my two sons, Nelson and Will, for their wonderful support. It will give privilege and honor for me to serve as the 2012 City Council President. I know that this position comes with great responsibility, but also great opportunity. I can assure you I will give nothing less than 100%. I will work alongside my colleagues, residents, the administration, and others to ensure we act in the best interest of our citizens. As this year comes full close, we have much to be grateful for despite the impact of the economic downturn and the year that brought us an earthquake, hurricane, record rain, and unseasonable temperatures. What a difference it made this. Last year, this time, we were all bad, we won a small storm after a lovely one, and this year, we had just the opposite, just today, that is, pretty cold. Some of the sacrifices that should have changed the local ground, not the same kind of place to come. I don't know the answer to that, but what I've proven of was that the vast majority of the residents of the City of Elizabeth and businesses have shown time again how resilient we can be as a community, and for this, I say thank you and ask for continued support. I also need to acknowledge all the good, hardworking city employees who keep this city moving forward outstandingly. Because of all that you've done this year, I want to give a special thanks to our uniforms, men and women, our public work department, and all those who provided the traffic, helped our residents, responded to medical emergencies and other emergency, cutting down streets and criminal opportunities to ensure our safety during many of these storms. Lastly, I have to recognize the tremendous efforts of the current administration. Facing this flat state debt allocation, pension reforms, a 2% comp and many other challenges, this administration has been able to maintain a high threat rating, avoid layoffs on many municipalities, aid our police and fire to balance their lives, continue to maintain a level of services for our residents, provide incentives for existing businesses to invest, and attracted many new businesses for our city. Mayor, thank you for your vision and mission. As we look ahead, we need to remain focused on providing residents the services they are entitled to and deserve, and businesses the opportunities to succeed if we are to continue the course of growth and prosperity in our good city. As we turn and turn the optimist, I want to share with you the following vote, votes with all the hope and promise. Theodore Roosevelt once said, "Believe you can and you're halfway there." Abraham Benjamin said, "Always verify that your own resolution to succeed is more important than any other." Ladies and gentlemen, clearly, we have shown that the City of Elizabeth can, and that we, the residents of the City of Elizabeth, have the resolution to succeed. Thank you, and these people too. I will now conduct the election for the president for the town for the City Council for the year 2012. Are there any nominations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
The president has been nominated, Councilman Donald Goldman.
President Goldman. Councilman Goldman, are there any other nominations?
This president, for like second nomination of our superior colleague and good friend of the law, Congressman DeGussen.
See, CEO of the House of nominations, Councilman Goldman has been nominated and every new nomination, I would pass the necessary ballot, electing Councilman Goldman, President for the town of the City Council for the year 2012. As former residents, I would like to appoint Councilman Randy Wester as floor leader for the year 2012, and Councilman Joe Keenan will recite the prayer of the religious to the American flag.
We will now conduct the petition and communication. The Honorable Mayor has submitted the following petitions. I will read the citation. By the oath, January 3, 2012, upon the members of City Council of Elizabeth, Elizabeth Teachers, ladies and gentlemen, please be advised that I am making the following reappointments and appointments to Board of Trustees of the Free Public Library. Please be advised that I am reappointing Ms. Adela La Pierre, 70 West Wilford Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey, to serve as trustee of the Free Public Library for a viable term. I am commending Ms. Latisha Arsalama, 732 New York Avenue, Elizabeth, to serve out the unaside term of Ms. Cheryl O'Keehan, who recently resigned. I am appointing Ms. Pearl Sartell, 857 Livingston Road, Elizabeth, to serve as a trustee of the Free Public Library for the unaside term of Ms. Hannah Carina, who has recently resigned. I am appointing Mr. Elheuloy J. Delgado, 90 East Rattle Island Avenue, Elizabeth, to serve as a trustee of the Free Public Library, alternate member, replacing Ms. Latisha Arsalama, who was recently proposed to fill the unaside term of Ms. Cheryl O'Keehan. I here with the appointment of Marcelo Lenes, 668 North Broad Street, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the planning board, alternate number two, to fill the unaside term of Commissioner Carina Veyron. I here with the reappointing Commissioner Maria Z. Carvalho, 6000 South Avenue, Elizabeth, to serve as a class three member of the planning board for a viable term. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I here with the following reappointments to Board of Justs. I here with reappoint Commissioner Alyssa Kano, 10th Street, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of Board of Justs, alternate number three, for a term of two years. I here with reappoint Commissioner Orlando Pizárez, 421 New York Avenue, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of Board of Justs, alternate number four, for a term of two years. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I here with the twenty, Councilman Willie Golden Jr., 624th Street, Elizabeth, to serve as a class three member of the planning board for a viable term. Sincerely, J. Chris Uhol, Mayor of New York City.
We will now conduct the office of business.
Advising consent to the reappointment of Ms. Alyssa Kano, 10th Street, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Justs, alternate number three, for a term of two years. Advising consent to the reappointment of Mr. Orlando Pizárez, 421 New York Avenue, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Justs, alternate number four, for a term of two years. Advising consent to the appointment of Councilman Willie Golden Jr., 624th Street, Elizabeth, to serve as a class three member of the planning board for a viable term.
You've heard the agreement of the resolution, what is your pleasure? Who filled the resolution for the votes, Senator? Do I have a second? Second. Move for the second, and Congress? For the call.
Councilwoman, for Mr. DeGussen.
Aye.
Councilman Question.
Aye.
Councilman Jackis.
Aye.
Councilman Broden.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Stenning.
Aye.
Councilman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilman Mann.
Aye.
All votes are passed. Mayor J. Chris Uhol is on the mission to be over the office to hold elections.
For the Board of Trustees of the Free Public Library, Ms. Adela La Pierre, Ms. Latisha Arsalama, Ms. Pearl Sartell, Mr. Elheuloy J. Delgado. Planning Board, Ms. Norm Marcelo Lenes, Lieutenant Lieutenant. For the planning board, Ms. Norm Marcelo Lenes, Ms. Maria Z. Carvalho. For the planning board, Ms. Norm Marcelo Lenes, Ms. Maria Z. Carvalho. For the Board of Justs, Ms. Alyssa Kano, Mr. Orlando Pizárez.
The mayor, the mayor will now address his subliminal with his hand in his.
Representative Dan, members of the City Council, we hold a fan celebration, we hold a celebration, President of King University Donald Tarabi, elected officials, friends, family, citizens of Elizabeth. Our city, the place of diversity, opportunity, and all else promised. Throughout our history, Elizabeth has invented, manufactured, fueled, supplied, protected, transported. We continue to lead the way with innovation, determination, technology, green building, inspiring initiatives, and operational efficiency. Receiving an A1 rating and stable financial capital from Moody's while we top taxes and While other cities have continued to struggle and downsize their forces, we did not let off a single pumping safety worker. We have not seen our recent firefighters and remain committed to new hires this year. Today, our unique lack of culture, ability to remain competitive, our sound investments, and resolve ensure Elizabeth's future is bright. The health and well-being of our residents should not be compromised due to financial hardships. Our city understands these struggles and has provided 800 police shots, 1,800 dental exams, and nearly 700 immunizations. Safety and health of our young people today and giving them the protection to grow even stronger tomorrow. Care alone is not enough. Residents must be able to access services within their neighborhoods. In coordination with Elizabeth Health Committee, the Neighborhood Health Center, and the new Elizabeth More Precious Security Center, providing childcare, medical and dental services, and meet this center on site. 2011 also brought the opening of a highly anticipated Trend House Core Build, with funding from EDC, this wide-pointed free million-dollar Center for Youth Education, combines professional training with impressive state-of-the-art services, space for education, community events, facilities for paramedic and EMT training. And continually to support our city, Trend House provides quality outpatient through innovative services, performing the state's first robot-assisted bariatric surgery, offering after-boost, a non-invasive form of rest gantry treatment, and preserving brain function following a cardiac arrest with codeine frostbite. Further expanding the knowledge and creating opportunities, our Office on Aids provides assistance to our residents, educational resource programs. Music field of course, and computer sessions, theater booth, line music, salsa classes, mental health, blood pressure, diabetes checkups, and two new senior rooms. Senior connections of the Council will only get better this year with the introduction of senior connection, increasing communication, interaction, and services, improved outreach, and application support for prescription, help, and rebate programs. Our building future leaders through service offered our Office on Aids continues to advocate the pursuit of assets, achievement to assistance, and having a positive impact throughout the community.
Thank you so much, Senator. I'm so very glad that you're here. It's not that time of the year for the talk, you know, the touting students and the
What is country? That's it. They had just right as I mentioned, the two services announcements, they have written their polls, they've written their show, they really put their hands on life experiences, and John feels that they might be able to actually get a job in the future, so I feel really proud of them. I see this path for the cast to be in.
For our employees issued that implement vital services and contribute to our vision, the Office on Aids continues to make significant strides through exciting collaborations, encourage personal and professional development, as well as establish other leadership positions throughout our city. Team mentorship, leadership program with Hawaii UCA, Met Mike financial literacy forum, Institute for Music Dance and performance workshops, internship opportunities, and interaction with King University's Center for Music. From free and safe places to instilling the value of educational basics through the City wide community, the Office of Aids is dedicated to making a difference in the lives of young people and preparing them for tomorrow. Our city understands the impact that our young people's choices and actions have on all of our future. We will assign resources to create a comprehensive, antipathy, and death prevention program, because that is what our Building Future Leaders Program does.
Cool.
Clap.
Click.
Feel.
Feel.
Press.
Push.
Stress.
Pull.
Crack.
Word.
Strike.
Stand.
Try.
Clap.
Free.
Help.
Peace.
It's not cool.
It's not cool.
It's not cool.
It's not cool.
Only when our city, and our community, and our country, it's not cool.
We have the candidates, communication, constructive alternatives, promote our common and independent views for our future. Making a difference is the Youth Bill Program and Ministers of Right and Dead. In September, I, along with Christian Garland, addressed 31 rapids as they embrace the future and continue to rebuild their lives. Sixty new schools recently entered the program, taking the first steps. Sixty new schools recently entered the program, taking the first steps by the scientific journey.
My name is Susan Heavens, and I was sent to my school and started shooting to put me inside a drop-off. I didn't know the drop-off, so I ran home. Between these four seniors who I was out on the streets being a teenager, and it's before the Council of Elizabeth told me they had a program, give them, and so I signed up for the program. And while I was a junior, I had G and I took a picture in construction. They didn't notice all the structure, they gave me guidance, and they know me, they home the first time today. It also sounds responsible, and I'm a member of Raging Dead, and I don't care.
Developing and implementing support mechanisms to achieve that our young people is paramount to succeeding in many environments. There is so much that we can do for our youth, after-school and summer programs, but when especially then and school is over, we must ensure that our residents have access to affordable and safe places to call home. The active development is in combining housing facilities with green elements from local library company vehicles, fourteen residential recreations, creating new construction jobs for our residents. Partners include Elizabeth Modern Perfect Program, County Community, Maggard Bank, and funding through President Obama's stimulus program. Moving forward with our successful government initiatives, our senior issue will open the first LEED Gold Certified Senior Affordable Housing Council. Thirty-one. In addition to incorporating self-driving roof, the city and housing authority identify the potential for a successful mixed-use opportunity in our oldest neighborhood. And across our city, green energy has been infused with local businesses, municipal buildings, and even within our new Spartan doors located within the heart of Midtown. This is our one, created 1,500 feet partner spaces. It's the first for ours in New Jersey to provide rechargeable facilities. We continue to lay the foundation and with the rear generation with solar panels that are harnessing natural energy, reducing our carbon footprint and saving our community money in places like A U G Accessions, Jersey Gardens, Adelant Coral Vision, the Midtown Partner Program, and Mantis Central Logistics, where four thousand solar panels were completed and thirty-five green jobs were created within our city. Each one of these unique and all deserve recreational houses. Five acres, eighteen playgrounds, dance, flower园, parks and craft, Easter egg rooms, boxing and X lady, swimming, and seven spray guns throughout our city. And this past summer, the largest municipal spray mart in Union County opened at the Union Water Center, which is inspired. Young people deserve the best indoor and outdoor recreation through home skills, remaining competitive within their sports, maintaining healthy lifestyles. That is why construction is started on the new synthetic turf fields at the waterfront. A new gym floor was placed within the X lady center. The best is yet to come with a new skate park, a reverse LeBron field with new synthetic turf, along with plans to acquire the Bayway Home and Soul and create a new athletic field. And all of this, ladies and gentlemen, is being accomplished while cutting taxes in your next. Working together, we continue to provide our residents with the resources they need, the opportunities they deserve. I believe in our city and the hardworking people of our community, for without them we could not accomplish this part, or we wouldn't embrace our exciting future. Across our city, throughout our nation, individuals have lost their jobs and continue to endure one every month on unemployment, searching, waiting for a chance. Our unemployment rate is among the lowest of New Jersey's largest cities, and we are looking to reduce that even more. Within the coming months, a new initiative will begin to happen that will place the employment of our residents first and put our city back to work. A new program, Elizabeth Hires. We are helping to invest residents through employment and support. Elizabeth residents will be hired for investing in theory and assigning to perform public work styles, beautifying our city, increasing skills through on-the-job training, and assisting families who need income for the future. Enhancing the abilities of our residents makes them remarkable and successful. Located within Jersey Gardens and Mantis Park, Union County College, the Retail Skills Center and City Journal continues to provide our city with valuable infrastructure and job-placing assistance, all at no cost to participants. In 2011, the Retail Skills Center placed 425 volunteers in jobs for more than 100 different countries. That's what Bishop Burgers does, he worked on the preparation since many years ago. He's trained 220 residents in customer services sales, managed fourteen job shares in 2011 and more, let's say, well, that's one of these success stories.
My name is Bella Iann, and the new school center changed my life. Three years ago, I, with Chris and I, moved to Elizabeth for my career. It was stressful time living in the country and having no real work experience. Within two months of finishing my training, I was hired in a school association in Jersey Gardens Mall. Since then, I've been promoted twice and enjoyed full-time employment. I am a success in the retail school center, Union County College, Mayor's Road, and the city for providing residents a great employment training program. Thank you, and don't forget to shop at Jersey Gardens Mall.
In order to continue to empower our residents to strengthen our communities, these programs help make our city successful and our future even better. Improving lives and the physical landscape of our neighborhood remains a commitment by our public works program. From Melmore to Elizabeth, more than thirty streets have been paved through our aggressive road resurfacing program. Our efforts to transform our city, a remodeling plan is under review, including the lightning cycles, creating a pedestrian-friendly shopping experience. King University banners will adorn the streets, creating a community connection throughout the district. Through planning awarded by the Jersey Department of Transportation, traffic signals were placed on West Thursday across Union County College. The Barrowland Gas Park project and Summer Street programs were completed, significantly reducing flooding during major rain events and mainly easier travel in all weather. Fifty percent of the cost will be reimbursed through President Obama's stimulus program. Providing residents and visitors with alternate forms of transportation, recreational departments, and the ability to achieve healthy living is essential to the growth of our incentive. These factors, combined with natural resources in Elizabeth River, have created unique opportunities and a project that is set to bring numerous benefits for our city. We brought ground on Phase One of the Elizabeth River, which is being constructed along Elizabeth River between South Floyd and Bridgewater. This initiative is in partnership between our city and our county, state and federal agencies, and Grand West Elizabeth. Phase Two will take place from Bridgewater to Southside, has also received funding from Union County Kids Recreation Trust grant, will be undergone design within the next couple of months. Our project depends on our building to maintain our infrastructure today to ensure that it is effective tomorrow through the Midtown infrastructure improvement program. Sources will be reconstructed. Streets like West Rain, West Thursday, Union, Merd, Westfield, when Hurricane I made the Jersey cross, it brought heavy rain, everywhere in the highway and major flood to our city. Our public works, police, firefighters, work through the night and nonstop until the following days, assisting residents, climbing on streets, removing downed trees, ensuring safe travel, and pumping out over five hundred basins. We were there to provide the services that our neighbors needed and deserved. When our state was required out of hope for FEMA assistance, we notified residents and directed them on how we would respond. In four minutes, rehearsed line by line of course, nix on this, updates on Facebook and Twitter, staying alert and connected to our city, enabled resources to be allocated quickly and vital information to be maintained. Throughout New Jersey, many large municipalities had to lay off police officers and firefighters due to their inability to maintain costs. Despite the trend and the reduction of state aid and the elimination of urban infrastructure and the implementation of a 2% cap, in Elizabeth, there was not a single public safety worker laid off. The city was retired four police officers, and maybe this month will add eighteen more, and some have already gone, some might ask if they stand up, some of them. And reviewing all the hits while we still cutting taxes. This only on force means increased services and controls to our security. It's what our Elizabeth residents expect from government, it's what Elizabeth is delivering. State-of-the-art fences provide our police with the resources they require to stay ahead and be prepared on assignment. Surveillance cameras, data terminals, facial recognition software, and fifteen mobile and fixed license plate records. This technology allows officers to obtain useful information that may be relevant to ongoing investigation, enabling prompt and informed response for emergency personnel. We are fixing ready-to-use reset boards, creating more efficient and secure working room. Completion of the Merd NIS system allows police fire and EMS to increase comfortability and make this month, every council will receive a new community safeguard, programs to save our homes and businesses, power and air to participate in our sixteen wireless systems, as well as guidelines to help our units stay safe and avoid the enemy. The most effective vehicles and equipment must be available to assist residents during their visits. In 2011, the Elizabeth Fire Department received a new heavy rescue and maintenance unit, upgraded education program. All of these items were funded through President Obama's stimulus program at no cost to our city taxpayers. Quality protective equipment made in New York. Through a corporate security grant, the Elizabeth Fire Department was able to upgrade all external equipment, providing essential defense from extreme heat. When buildings and houses are engulfed by fates, firefighters must be able to quickly get to safety. Rescue systems save lives and provide to all members of the department through this plan. Each firefighter receives training and carries the equipment on each call, which will be available at any scene. From an unusual earthquake to a damaging hurricane, our forces respond with that to provide assistance and ensure the stability of our community. And just days ago, these men and women were there for our city then, when a dangerous fire lit off a 650,000 square foot vandal in North End. Reaching 816, the smoke of former Jersey City warehouse could be seen for miles, and heat increased to uncountable levels. Along with EFD, more than 250 firefighters of 36 companies in our area responded. It took six days to get under control. Our facing firefighters remain on the scene, securing the area. It is this level of dedication and commitment that exemplifies the best of our city's civil service. The whole of the fire department continues to stand as do the needs of our city. In the coming months, we will highlight the issue, fifteen firefighters, providing even more protection for our residents, and we are increasing services while cutting your taxes. As the fastest growing municipality among the largest cities, keeping abreast of news and updates is important, and this will become even easier. Within the coming weeks, we will launch a new city website, increasing accessibility to municipal information, providing more opportunities to interact with city officials, and showcasing our exceptional programs and diversity. More than a decade ago, a garden shop was transformed into a successful shopping destination. Jersey Gardens continues to welcome visitors to our region, across our region, and visitors from 158 countries. New stores, Era and Andrew Martin, Julie John Fit, a newly expanded Forever 21, and issue of Jersey Gardens, well-known Disney Store and Technology, with more than 200 shops, which continues to exceed expectations and brings 15 million people to our city. Utilizing this momentum, Jersey Gardens will embark on a $30 million renovation project, which includes both internal and external enhancements. Revitalize agents to encourage leisure access, resurface floors, refinish restaurants, and use storms to help, and slide in to clearly navigate the state's largest animal mall. In 2018, I joined over twenty new businesses as they opened their doors and became part of Elizabeth's community. Revolution Foods, Big Lots, RSC Equipment, Delicious Desserts, Investors Bank, and last year, I talked about Wake Thunder Food Corporation in the state and city address, and the plans to expand their facilities in Elizabeth. Starting with all right, I'm closer with the presidents of Altonon Development Corporation and Wakeford. This March, we will break ground on a new 524,000 square foot facility, creating hundreds of new jobs for our city. From all restaurants, expansions, and exciting new stores, to brand new hotels and open restaurants, the city of Elizabeth has just for residents, vacationers, and the traveling public, wants and needs. In coordination with the Greater Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce and EDC, new restaurant visitor guide highlights great places to dine. visitor guide highlights great places to dine, to stay, and to visit. Community input, feedback, and interaction are imperative to address concerns and improving the quality of life. During the summer, we reactivated our constituent services task teams. They went door-to-door, young people recording answers, relaying information, and providing a direct link to state government. It was an invaluable resource to exchange ideas and focus on areas that need improvement, connecting residents with services. 2011 was a difficult year for many large cities. Monstrous investors and greed dogs, manipulation by Wall Street corporations, the consequences of the failure and costing bad out of beds, along with periods of high unemployment. All contribute to an ongoing recession that left all of us alone without a cause. Too many, including the people in training, tried to make way on the middle class, attacking a lifetime worth of work and a future worth of esteem. This is not our city, and this will not be our future. President Abraham Lincoln once said, "The legitimate object of government is to use for its community people whatever they need to have done." Since the beginning, we have serviced our citizens, protected our children, and invested in our future. From maintaining the affordability of living to increasing our opportunities and critical services, we will continue to fight for our residents because we are here to serve. And when our residents is struggling with the loss of their jobs and search for opportunities, we cannot sit by and watch. We go action, creating employment program, increasing skills, on-the-job training, and cutting your taxes. The citizens of our city needs, grand needs, is what Elizabeth does. Hiring more resources, hiring more firefighters, expanding community programs, and cutting your taxes. Look around. We are coworkers, we are friends. But all we are is, we are not bystanders who will be in. We do not sit back and watch and see what happens next. We stand up for what we believe in and for what our city deserves. We cut your taxes, we increase your services, we have developed and strengthened our community and unstoppable energy, fueled by a divine commitment to be our city and our future. We will accept nothing less than the best as we continue to put Elizabeth residents first. This is our commitment to our city, our promise to our future, because Elizabeth is not just a flight time map, it is a home and together we will create and even better tomorrow. Thank you.